Okay, we're ready.
Let's do it.
On a call, the regular meeting of the Governing Board to order. It is Tuesday, May 24th, 2016, 7:00 PM. Sandra Day O'Connor High School Air Force Junior ROTC Color Guard will lead us in the pledge. We want to thank the Sandra Day O'Connor Air Force Junior ROTC. Let's move on to roll call. Mr. Baer is not here. Other Ford Board members are present. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Well, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Awards, achievements, and recognitions. I think we have a video first.
Good evening, President Gregoire, members of the Governing Board, Superintendent Weitnerheimer, and special guests. For 30 years, the City of Phoenix has selected an outstanding young man and young woman of the year. This program recognizes the honors and honors the outstanding achievements of young people and raises community awareness of their positive contributions. Each year, high school students are selected as council district winners and recognized at an event with the mayor, along with the teacher who inspired them most. From the district winners, a young man and young woman are selected as overall winners. And this year, Sandra Day O'Connor Junior was selected as City of Phoenix Outstanding Young Man of the Year.
So I started a project called Project First Start here on campus. And essentially what we do is we help raise awareness for ethnicities and people who don't have like the same publicity and the same and more of the awareness that people don't have the same awareness that we do of our culture. So my job and what I do is I educate people of these cultural values of different communities.
I had him in AP Calculus AB last year, and then this year I have him in AP Calculus BC. He is first, very intelligent and very driven to be successful at whatever he does. It doesn't matter if it has to do with math or if it's anything that he does. He strives to always do his best.
I do tutoring every once in a while. I do host a class for calculus students every week or so, every month or so before an EP test. We'll go over a couple of concepts and I'll prepare them for the test. But I think one of the biggest things that I've achieved academically is not only helping myself and developing a high standard for myself, but I've also helped others develop the same high standard and hopefully they can achieve the same things that I have. My dream career is to become a financial advisor. Now, I think what I really, really strive on doing is I want to connect that financial advisor portion with my love for helping, love and passion for helping the community.
Congratulations, City of Phoenix Outstanding Young Man of the Year, Yash Patel. We invite Yash's family and teacher to come forward for the photo. Thank you. Approximately 1.5 million students entered the 2016 National Merit Scholarship Program, and less than 1% of those talented students are awarded a National Merit Scholarship. Brooklyn Edwards from Sandra Day O'Connor High School is a hardworking, focused young lady who finds the time to help others and always has a heartwarming smile on her face. She has received $645,000 in scholarship offers, including being named a National Merit Scholar. She has received offers from the University of Oklahoma, the University of North Texas, the University of Alabama, the University of Arizona, Arizona State University, and Brigham Young University where she plans to attend this fall. Congratulations, Sandra Day O'Connor Senior, National Merit Scholar, Brooklyn Edwards. We had a lot of events going on tonight, so I think Brooklyn was not able to be here. Each May, Deer Valley Unified School District recognizes the students at each of our high schools who receive the largest amount of scholarship offerings. We begin with Barry Goldwater High School, where Carolyn Baginsky received three offers totaling $417,856. Carolyn has selected to attend Northwestern University. Congratulations, Carolyn Baginsky. Next, we have Boulder Creek High School's Madison Chemnitz, who received seven scholarship offers totaling $424,844. She has selected to attend Boise State University. Congratulations, Madison Chemnitz. From Sandra Day O'Connor High School, Teresa Griegeau received seven offers totaling $739,400. She has selected to attend Pembroke Dine University. Unfortunately, Teresa was unable to attend tonight as she is working at tutor time. From Mountain Ridge High School, Sarah Heilman received seven scholarship offers totaling more than $1.3 million. Sarah has selected to attend Dartmouth College. Congratulations, Sarah. And last, but certainly not least, from Deer Valley High School, Emily Conlon received 10 scholarship offers totaling more than $1.7 million. She has selected to attend Anderson University and has her own fan club here tonight. Congratulations, Emily Conlon. The Academic Pentathlon is a five-event scholastic competition for middle school students, providing an introduction to the benefits of the academic decathlon, along with the challenges of rigorous team and individual competition. Hillcrest Middle School team competed in the five academic events of literature, mathematics, fine arts, science, and social studies. Hillcrest Pentathlon team did so well at the state competition, they won it. They are state champions, officially ranked number one in Arizona, and invited to Nationals. Congratulations to the first and only middle school pentathlon team in DVUSD, the pentathlon state champions from Hillcrest Middle School. The Deer Valley Unified School District athletic programs are committed to providing an enjoyable experience in a safe environment where student athletes promote pursuing victory with honor through the six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. We are proud of the 2015-2016 award winners. District Athletic Director Scott Brown will now recognize each winner of the Pursuing Victory With Honor awards.
Thank you. I realize some of the award winners couldn't be here tonight, but we will go down the list so everybody will know. This came from our banquet that was May 16th last week. For the 7th and 8th grade female athlete, Riley Bayes from Stetson Hills. Riley was a three-sport athlete and on the honor roll. For the 7th and 8th grade male athlete, David Onuigbo, who was also a four-sport athlete and on the principal's advisory. Our 7th and 8th grade coach is Eddie James from Deer Valley Middle School, coaches many sports and has overcome a major car wreck this year with a smile. The 7th and 8th grade team was Stetson Hills Boys Volleyball with head coach Ryan Backstrom. They were undefeated and the Division One champion this year. Our high school female athlete was Olivia Brunt from O'Connor, a four-year starter for girls volleyball and helped the beach volleyball team to the Final Four this year. For our high school male athlete, it was Cory Crooks from Boulder Creek. Cory was a state champion in wrestling at 145. He finished his career 176 and 15. Our high school coach was Jesus Flores from Goldwater, coaches golf, basketball, tennis, and his teams improve and play with pride and character. Our high school, excuse me, our high school team is O'Connor Softball with head coach Melissa Hobson, 2015 state champions and a Final Four this year. Our Athletic Administrator of the Year was Scott Warner. Scott has helped the athletic, the Skyhawks Athletic Program to the 2015-16 All-Around Sports Championship Award for DVUSD. Our Parents Award goes to Tim Smith from Goldwater, who's a baseball booster club president, and Julie Muncy from Boulder Creek, who helped, who did football and wrestling and track booster club. Our School of the Year for Pursue Victory With Honor was Sandra Day O'Connor with Principal Lynn Miller and Athletic Director Chandler Evans. Our Inspirational was David Sederstrom from O'Connor, a four-year letterman in baseball and two years as the assistant coach. Our Courage Award goes to Kent Younger from O'Connor, battling with some personal injuries, postponed surgery to coach tennis team this year at O'Connor. Again, I'm really sorry that some of them couldn't make it, but I tell you, it was a great banquet. And I think we're one of the few school districts around that does it. And I think honoring these people is really important. I thought they did a great job, so let's give one more round of applause.
Tonight, we will also recognize our spring state sports champions. We begin with the individual awards. Please come forward when your name is called. Our state champion in track and field, girls shot put from Deer Valley High School, Emily Conlon. We invite Emily's family and coach to join her in a photo. Our state champion in track and field, girls 1600 meters and 3200 meters from Deer Valley High School, Cassidy Deardorff. And we invite her family and coach to join us for the photo. Our state champion in track and field, boys 800 meters from Boulder Creek High School, Daniel Lozano. We invite Daniel's family and coach to come forward for the photo. Next up, two-time champion in track and field, girls triple jump from Deer Valley High School, Katherine Nance. Our final individual state champion in track and field, boys 200 meters from Deer Valley High School, Elian, got all choked up. Elian Roberts. Now to our state champion teams. And I'm not sure if they're here tonight, but if they are, congratulations Boulder Creek High School, Coach Troy Dooling and the state champion boys volleyball team. And I know there's members of this next team here. Congratulations, state champion, Coach Eric Bolis, Division Two Deer Valley Girls Track and Field Team. This is why they have four coaches. No hiding. Deer Valley Unified School District regularly recognizes students, staff, and community members who exemplify strong character and courage with the Community of Character and Courage recognition. Tonight, we recognize the character traits of good citizenship and caring to Sandra Day O'Connor students Lily Sheehan and Madison Bellin. Lily and Madison planned Bloom, a prom in support of students with disabilities and their peer mentors, which was held at Sandra Day O'Connor High School last month. The girls coordinated donations, 50 student volunteers, transportation, hair and makeup, and special touches like flower hair clips and corsages. Bloom was a great way for both students with disabilities and student mentors to share in the fun experience of a high school prom in a comfortable and supported environment. Sardella's provided pizzas, Grad's Photography donated a photography session and complimentary picture for each student, and Baker Wee Bakery donated desserts and snacks. Other items were donated by Costco. A DJ had everyone out on the dance floor. Tables were decorated with fresh flowers from Rustic Roots Flowers.
So, thank you. Here we go. Step foot into Mr. Koots, Boulder Creek High School's Probability and Statistics and Algebra 3-4 Classroom, and you will encounter excellence. Students work in cooperative learning groups and pore through their data, set SMART goals, and personally conference one-on-one with him to ensure personal success in his classroom. Goals result in extrinsic and intrinsic rewards in that students benefit from the drive that comes from incremental successes while earning tangible rewards that are associated with goal attainment. Whether it's his over-the-top dedication to Spirit Week, as he has been a loyal BC JAG for 10 years, or experiments like calculating how many licks it takes to get to the center of a Tootsie Pop. Mr. Koots and his students know how to build a safe community where learning is indeed fun. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Koots. Miss Angela South, they may be five, six tops, but make no mistakes. Mrs. South's kindergartners set the goals and achieve like their much older schoolmates. Age is not a factor for these students. Just ask one to pull his or her data binder, and you will be taken on a journey of successes. Strengths and areas for improvement, with very few sidetracked stories of brothers, sisters, big adventures at recess, or in the cafeteria. These data-driven students move from station to station seamlessly, work diligently, and take pride and ownership of their work and their accomplishments. What's more, within the classroom, they really are an extended family. Please join me in congratulating Miss South. I'm going to ask, I know there's many students here tonight to celebrate, so I'm going to ask the students and the principals to join us for a picture.
Our teachers and rookies of the year were recognized recently at a banquet in their honor, and tonight, we recognize their extraordinary abilities in the classroom. To do just that is Deer Valley Education Foundation Executive Director Marie Brennan.
Mr. President, Governing Board, Superintendent Dr. Wittenheimer, and guests, the Deer Valley Education Foundation and the Deer Valley Unified School District are very proud to announce the 2015-2016 Teachers of the Year and Rookies of the Year. Thanks to the generous donors of the foundation, we were able to honor these teachers at a reception and dinner, where they each received a plaque, a check for $500, two tickets to a show at the Arizona Broadway Theater, and one lucky teacher even received the trip to Disneyland. Teachers, please come forward to the left as I announce your name. Michelle Bosamo, New River. Steven Koots, Boulder Creek. Tina Crane, Legend Springs. Lynette Gatos, Terra Canyon. Nicholas Gearing, Boulder Creek. Lance Gephardt, Legend Springs. Jeff Harold, Hillcrest. Diana Herenjak, Mirage. Jamie Irwin, Mountain Ridge. Mindy Koots, Hillcrest. Jacqueline McCormick, Bel Air. Robin Naylor, Sandra Day O'Connor. Beth Rodriguez, Sunset Ridge. Melinda Splitick, Mountain Ridge. Deanna Tucker, Village Meadows. And our first-year rookie teachers, Jennifer Firdman, Terramar. And Megan Mittendorf, Vista Peak. Please give these very special teachers and their families a big round of applause.
Our final award tonight recognizes one outstanding educator from each Arizona Middle Level Association member school for his or her commitment to middle-level education, one of the most challenging and rewarding jobs as an educator. Nominations are made by participating AMLA school principals. Here is what Michelle Phipps, principal, said about her. "Michelle is an integral part of Desert Sky community. She holds many leadership roles, including campus improvement, team chair, ELA department leader, and track coach. She is a campus leader when any new initiative is brought forward and gracefully assists in any capacity needed. Her ability to develop trusting relationships with students while holding them to high expectations makes her a valuable member of our learning community." Renee Harold's principal said, "Renee demonstrates a strong understanding of the middle-level learner and continually supports student needs. As lead counselor, she is a student advocate and takes all measures to ensure that her students and their families are in possession of needed resources. Ms. Harold unifies our campus with enthusiasm and compassion, and her passion for middle-level learning creates a purposeful community on the Hillcrest campus." Congratulations, Arizona Middle Level Teachers of the Year, from Desert Sky Middle School, Michelle Phipps, and from Hillcrest Middle School, Renee Harold. Unfortunately, Michelle could not be here tonight. We do invite Renee's principal and family to come up and be in the photo.
Before everybody leaves, just want to thank everybody. This is a phenomenal year. I think that's a record for most awards given at a board meeting. You guys finished strong, and we appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Okay, I think we can move on. Governing Board reports, I think I'll start first. I never get to start first. So, I just want to thank everybody. We don't have all our full staff of principals here. We have some, but on behalf of the board, on behalf of myself, they can speak for themselves, I guess. Great year, phenomenal year. I think it's the best achievement-wise, sports-wise, we've had since the 12 years I've been around Deer Valley. So, thank you. It's no short order for the efforts that you put in that made us the way we are, still an A-rated district, and many more A-plus schools. So, that's all I have. I'll move on to Mrs. Fisher.
I'm going to keep mine pretty simple, too. There's so many events this time of the year, you can't really list them all that you attend. But it's wonderful to see all the achievements of our students. I want to thank everybody also for all the work they've done. For our nine- and 10-month employees, enjoy your break. For our 12-month employees, well, enjoy your accomplishments and then try and take a break. But it's time to plan for the next year. And the one thing that we sometimes forget to thank is our parents and our students for all their hard work, because our students are the reason we're here. And it's been a great year, and we're looking forward to the next one and on to graduations.
Thank you, President Gregoire. Ditto on much of what they said, so that I don't have to repeat it, but I would like to thank our voters for the passage of Proposition 123. That was unfortunately another nail-biter, but we got it out again. I do want to request that we make sure that, as a district, we really effectively communicate to all of our stakeholders, especially the ones outside of the district, how we are spending those funds. There's still quite a bit of talk and I think distrust in where that money is going to go. And I know that we've already voted, but I really want to make sure that our community knows what we're doing with our money. I have had some great opportunities to visit some campuses over the last couple of weeks. I do want to touch real quick on Norterra Canyon, because I was able to see the Junior Great Book Program in full swing. They had a class there that was just so engaged. They were fourth graders, just having to defend their arguments. And from the book, it was a phenomenal thing to see from fourth graders talking about passages they were reading. So, that was really neat. Couple A-plus ceremonies. I also attended or participated in a webinar with ASBO and ASBA about our 2017 budget and the 2016 legislative wrap-up, which was very interesting. A lot goes on in those 100-plus days that our legislature is in session. So, that was a nice wrap-up. And this morning, I was able to attend a meeting with Representative Heather Carter, AEA President Andrew Morrell, Governor Ducey's Chief of Staff Kirk Adams, as well as Wes Max, Director of Government Relations Diane McCarthy. And they were talking about K-12 education and what is next. And so, along with the Prop 123 and the coalition that helped to get that passed, they were talking about the next step, which is the renewal of Prop 1301, and looking at the impact of current-year funding, small-school funding, district charter school funding, and J-TED, which were only fixed with one-time funding in this year's budget, which I think is important for our community to realize. So, we need to keep working to help improve education funding. And then, again, just appreciate, thank you to Dr. Vee and David Duarte and Monica for that awesome end-of-the-year video. That was a great addition to my day. It was fabulous. And I'm looking forward to the eighth-grade promotions and high-school graduations. Enjoy your summer break if you get one. Thank you.
Mrs. Ordway.
Well, I would have to say yes with what Michael said, yes with what Ms. Fisher said, yes with what Ms. O'Brien said, but I do want to thank all of our campuses for being so inviting when your board members come, and for the students to show their authentic learning experiences. And when you have even high-school kids excited about what they're learning, it's kind of cool. So, we've got promotions coming up, we've got graduations coming up, we've got the end of the year. Thank you for everyone for sticking in there, for getting over your humps, and for planning for next year. I know Paul Strauss, who sits in that chair, who was Gary McSpadden tonight, has already planned probably his first semester for next year. So, enjoy yourselves, and we'll see you at the next board meeting, because you all want to come. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank Paul for standing in for Gary tonight. Thank you. He really taxed you today. And Dr. Wittenheimer.
Thank you, President Gregoire. I'm not going to pass on the current events. Ditto to all of those things, and I'm going to invite Cheryl Paul to come up and share with you a little bit of information about Student Voice.
Good evening, President Gregoire, members of the Governing Board, Superintendent Wittenheimer, and guests. It is with great pleasure that I present to you this evening a glimpse into the Student Voice for Excellence program. This program further demonstrates Deer Valley's commitment to ensure that students are equipped with the skills necessary to meet the challenges and opportunities of the future. This program would not have been successful without the support of parents, students, campus leaders, and administrators. And I know that we do have some of our students in the audience, so I would like you to stand and be recognized. So, if you would just stand, thank you. This marks the fifth year that the Student Voice... to all of our stakeholders, especially the ones outside of the district, how we are spending those funds. There's still quite a bit of talk and I think distrust in where that money is going to go. And I know that we've already voted, but I really want to make sure that our community knows what we're doing with our money. I have had some great opportunities to visit some campuses over the last couple of weeks. I do want to touch real quick on Nortera Canyon, because I was able to see the Junior Great Book Program in full swing. They had a class there that was just so engaged. They were fourth graders, just having to defend their arguments. And from the book, it was a phenomenal thing to see from fourth graders talking about, you know, passages they were reading. So, that was really neat. Couple A-plus ceremonies. I also attended or participated in a webinar with ASBO and ASBA about our 2017 budget and the 2016 legislative wrap-up, which was very interesting. A lot goes on in those 100-plus days that our legislature is in session. So, that was a nice wrap-up. And this morning, I was able to attend a meeting with Representative Heather Carter, AEA President Andrew Morrell, Governor Ducey's Chief of Staff Kirk Adams, as well as Wes Max, Director of Government Relations Diane McCarthy. And they were talking about K-12 education and what is next. And so, along with the Prop 123 and the coalition that helped to get that passed, they were talking about the next step, which is the renewal of Prop 1301, and looking at the impact of current-year funding, small school funding, district charter school funding, and J-TED, which were only fixed with one-time funding in this year's budget, which I think is important for our community to realize. So, we need to keep working to help improve education funding. And then, again, just appreciate, thank you to Dr. Vee and David Duarte and Monica for that awesome end-of-the-year video. That was a great addition to my day. It was fabulous. And I'm looking forward to the eighth-grade promotions and high school graduations. Enjoy your summer break if you get one. Thank you.
Ms. Ordway.
Well, I would have to say yes with what Michael said, yes with what Ms. Fisher said, yes with what Ms. O'Brien said, but I do want to thank all of our campuses for being so inviting when your board members come and for the students to show their authentic learning experiences. And when you have even high school kids excited about what they're learning, it's kind of cool. So, we've got promotions coming up, we've got graduations coming up, we've got the end of the year. Thank you for everyone for sticking in there, for getting over your humps, and for planning for next year. I know Paul Strauss, who sits in that chair, who was Gary McSpadden tonight, has already planned probably his first semester for next year. So, enjoy yourselves, and we'll see you at the next board meeting, because you all want to come. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank Paul for standing in for Gary tonight. Thank you. He really taxed you today. And Dr. Wittenheimer.
Thank you, President Gregoire. I'm not going to pass on the current events, ditto to all of those things, and I'm going to invite Cheryl Paul to come up and share with you a little bit of information about Student Voice.
Good evening, President Gregoire, members of the Governing Board, Superintendent Wittenheimer, and guests. It is with great pleasure that I present to you this evening a glimpse into the Student Voice for Excellence program. This program further demonstrates Deer Valley's commitment to ensure that students are equipped with the skills necessary to meet the challenges and opportunities of the future. This program would not have been successful without the support of parents, students, campus leaders, and administrators. And I know that we do have some of our students in the audience, so I would like you to stand and be recognized. So, if you would just stand, thank you. This marks the fifth year that the Student Voice for Excellence has been a catalyst to gather actionable information directly from students to support decisions and set improvement goals for change and innovation. Between 2011 and 2016, a diverse group of students have focused on various topics, resulting in the contribution to the development of a portrait of a graduate. The profile outlines necessary skills for graduates to possess in order to be successful in future college and/or career endeavors. Each year, the culminating activity is the creation of a video. This year, students shared how the adults on their campus encouraged them to overcome obstacles, how their principal makes a difference in how they feel about school, and how teachers make a difference in how they feel about learning. The full video is posted on the DVUSD website, and I do encourage you to watch it at a later time. For now, let's enjoy the trailer, and then Dr. Wittenheimer will share more about the Portrait of a Graduate with you.
They want us to be able to connect to what they're learning, but the way that they do that is by using real-life examples and scenarios that kids our age would experience.
And the teacher took the time to stop the lesson and explain how what we're learning could be used in a real-world situation.
I think it's very big that a student is constantly interacting with the teacher and what's going on, just to stimulate the learning.
During lunch, he comes over to us and gives us a high-five, and it makes me feel really special, because he asked me how I feel about my day and if it's going well.
They don't just see me as a student, but as a person.
He adapts to my unique needs and takes his job as more than a job, but as a passion.
My principal makes a difference in how I feel about school by truly showing the love and encouragement and enthusiasm that he has for his job.
They don't want me to just exceed in school, but they want me to exceed in life.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. I want to add, absolutely, and thank you, students that participated. I want to add just a couple of comments about the end product, or actually, the great handoff that happened from Student Voice to a group of almost 100 other students. And I get to do a lot of really cool things as superintendent. This experience that I had this year was probably one of the coolest I've had in my entire career. I had a chance to hear directly from about 150 student voices in our district. I got to hear it personally, from students that are declared college-bound. I had students that were actively disengaged in any instructional or extracurricular program, actively disengaged, career and technology-focused, extracurricular-focused, and non-college-bound students. And I got to visit with each of those students and talk about school and their experience. We talked about what they wanted to learn. We talked about how they thought we should be preparing them to do the things that they want to do. So, we reviewed examples of things called a portrait of a graduate from across the country. And I know you know, as governing board members and you all in the audience know, our state and our district through its standards and curriculum tell our students what they're going to learn. This document from our students tells us what they value and want to learn. And so, what I would tell you is, the work starts here with the Student Voice and the Portrait of a Graduate. These words on this page are not interrupted by parent or community or adult thinking. They are honed by students from the beginning to the very end. And so, I thank all of the 150 students that I got a chance to visit with. I present this to you, and we will use this to back in to what we need to do with our time with our students, so that we're certain that we are taking care of all the things that they value and want to learn. So, that concludes the superintendent's report. I'm very proud of it, and I look forward to our next meeting when I get a chance to even delve into it a little bit more deeply. Thank you, Mr. Gregoire.
Okay. Thank you. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, 2016 Summer Learning Opportunities. Gail?
Good evening, President Gregoire, governing board members, Dr. Wittenheimer, and guests. Tonight, I will provide information on the summer learning opportunities available in our district for academic and enrichment needs. Summertime offers an opportunity to help bridge the achievement gap and many times the opportunity gap. DVUSD's summer learning programs give students the chance to master material they did not learn in the previous school year, prevent learning loss, propel learning gains, and provide students with enrichment opportunities. For our elementary schools, six of our Title I schools will offer academic and enrichment programs through either their 21st Century program or Title I program. Students in our Special Education Extended School Year program are high-need students who either regress over breaks or are at a critical learning stage at some part of their development in academics. Each year, we provide extended school year services for qualifying special education students. This is a highly structured program designed to prevent students from regressing or losing those skills. That program will be at Vista Peak again this year. Our high schools are offering classes for their campuses for a face-to-face summer experience. All five high schools are offering courses for credit recovery, course extension, or course advancement. Students from any of the high schools can attend a different high school summer program as long as space is available. E-School also provides summer school courses for students. The middle school program is for students who are not proficient in a core content course, and it is a blended delivery model. Our high school courses provide opportunity also for credit recovery, course extension, or course advancement on a completely online environment. Community education provides amazing and varied opportunities for students in third through 12th grade in the Summer Rocks Camps, all located on the O'Connor High School campus. These are popular offerings for students, and two of them, Arts Rocks and Theater Rocks, are completely full. And in case you wanted to know, this year's musical is Beauty and the Beast Junior, and you are welcome to attend. In addition, two of our campuses are hosting Gifted Rocks Camps. The STEM Edition at Canyon Springs is new for us this year, and it's a good fit for Canyon Springs, as that is one of our identified STEM schools. Community education also provides programs that are targeted for specific needs, as can be seen on this slide. Right now, Driver's Education is completely full for the summer. Research shows that what happens out of school has significant impact on what happens in school for students. Summer learning programs are proven to maintain and advance students' academic and social growth, keep children safe and healthy during the summer, and send our young people back to school ready to learn. We are proud of the many different summer learning offerings for DVUSD students. Through summer programs, they have the time to get ahead, to branch out and learn new skills, to have new experiences, and for anyone who has fallen behind, we have opportunities for them to catch up on those learning gaps. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Orp.
My comment is, I think we have awesome opportunities for our kids academically, but the whole child is going to be met. And I will tell you, the Science Rocks Camp is cool to go to. Oh, yeah, there's Thumbs Up by Paul Strauss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Human Resources Staffing Update. Jada?
Was Jim before me? Did I come up to him right? Okay. There we are. Good evening, President Gregoire, governing board members, and Dr. Wittenheimer. Tonight, I will be providing to you an update with our certified staffing, as well as recent efforts with our recruitment and retention. You're going to see some standard slides that you're familiar with. K-6 postings, this was as of yesterday. K-3 positions at the K-6 schools, there are eight of those. Five positions in grades four through six. Special education, there are six openings right now in K-6 schools, and that does include preschool programs that we have added. And we do have seven openings in specialized staff. And again, that includes special areas, reading specialists and positions like that. You'll also see that there are 24.9 FTE that are currently allocated or not yet absorbed for K-6 campuses, and compared to my last report, that is a reduction for K-6 campuses. K-8 posted positions, we've reduced the K-3 and the 4-6 section. They now each have one posting. Grades seven through eight only have three postings at this time at K-8 campuses, and there are currently seven special education positions, seven, or I'm sorry, 11 specialized staff posted at the K-8, and they're at a 20.3 FTE. Three middle schools represented here in the grades seven through eight, naturally, it's a middle school, there are five positions posted, four special education positions posted, and exploratory support positions, we are down to one position. Those do actually equate the amount of FTE that we have not yet absorbed at the middle school level. High school posted positions, math and science, we are looking at seven vacancies right now. History and ELA, one, and that's on the history side, not the ELA side. Special education, four vacancies right now, and in the areas of foreign language and support, there are seven vacancies. And high school has reduced the most, they are down to 13.8 FTE absorbed, and my last report, it looks like they were sitting at 22.4 FTE, so they have filled many of their Overall, our campuses have filled 26% more of their vacancies since the beginning of this month, so the beginning of May. We are currently more staffed than we were at this time last year. This is largely due to less positions needed. We are not opening a campus this year, and we did not add yet more special education positions. Last year, we added, in addition to what was normally allocated, 10, and this year, we don't have those added on. Also, our retention rate is improved. We are sitting with our new teacher group. By the end of this week, we will have all our general population reviewed, but we did take a first look at our first-year hires, so that would include brand-new teachers, new to the profession, and teachers that we just hired that come with years of experience. So, we are sitting at an 81% retention rate for this year compared to last year. At the end of the 1415 school year, we had a 63% retention rate, so we are celebrating that right now. Other points of interest, we do have two recruitment fairs on deck. Albuquerque is next week, and later in June, a couple of weeks later, we have Oklahoma City. Also, a point of interest for you, in-district staffing will continue through June 3rd in an effort to recruit over to our special education positions. We do have 21 vacancies right now in special education classrooms, so that would be out on campus. So, we sent information out to all of our dual-certified teachers. So, these would be teachers that are certificated to teach both special education and general education. If they are currently in a general education classroom, we've notified them that the board has approved a $2,000 hard-to-fill addenda should they choose to be interviewed for a position in special education. Also, earlier this year, we shared with the governing board that we were going to be performing teacher-focused groups. And so, we're going to share some information with you pertaining to that, because it does address both recruitment and retention planning. In addition to that, Dr. Vee will be reviewing the other district efforts and HR efforts for recruitment and retention. So, the objective of our focus groups this year was to gain insight as to why employees, specifically teachers with four or more years of experience, chose to stay in DVUSD and chose to join DVUSD. This was in an effort to validate our employee value proposition and also to improve efforts with retention, focused efforts and focused efforts with our recruitment. We categorized all of our questions based on research in both corporate world and specific to education, and what people said across the nation on why they chose a district or why they chose to stay in education. And you'll see those right in front of you. Every question we asked had something to do with one of these categories. So, tonight, I'm going to share with you two specific areas. One of the areas was why they joined. We asked why they came to DVUSD. The most common, or the top 10 reasons, you'll see right in front of you on this slide, their children attend DVUSD, so that is a huge draw, number-one draw for our employees. They live in the area, and their children are already here. They also liked the job opportunities that were present in Deer Valley. Sometimes that was specific to programs or different types of schools that we have, because we are a unified district. They also mentioned that another employee already working in DVUSD recommended that they work here in DVUSD. And we have learned from Dr. Smith, as you know, the net promoter score is really important. And so, learning that many employees were recruited by our own was a happy thing to hear. Student teachers, we know that that is a large draw for us, so we have put many things together this year to beef up that program and to build our teacher pipeline through our student-teacher program. Reputation, they were a graduate, they did have an attractive salary when they came in. Quick response from Human Resources was common, as well as the recruiter, so that could be the principal, the assistant principal, or another teacher on campus. They liked that we were the first district that called them. And also, they have relatives that live in the area, or we found them at a job fair, and they liked us the best, and they came our direction. Here are the reasons why they say they stay, and again, these are teachers that have stayed with us four or more years. And I do want to note that those teachers were randomly selected, and this was a partnership with Maria Leva and DVEA, and we did go through a very discreet process in selecting those people. It was completely random. Okay, so why they stay? Employee connections, they love the family atmosphere that they have on their campus. Nearly every campus we visited, they love where they work, and they love the people that they work with. They did find, and many of them claimed, that this is just the state of education. It can be detrimental to leave. If you've worked in a district long enough, and you choose to go to another district, and each district tends to only honor a certain amount of years of service, that they're going to lose money if they leave. Child attends DVUSD, so that brought them here, and that keeps them here. They like their benefit package, they reside in our district, they love their administration, and they feel supported by their administration, they enjoy the signature campus programs, and they're comfortable and they like it where they are. We did also collect a parking lot, so of course, people feel the need to declare the things that are not so happy or are chewing on them, and they feel they need to put that out there. So, of course, we collected that information, too. The two hot items for areas of improvement were compensation. They all felt this was loud, very loud. Every group that we went to, compensation was needed. And the other thing that is completely parallel with research, with employee engagement, and with the questions that we asked, was recognition. They felt that they needed to be recognized. There were campuses where they felt they were very recognized, but recognition came in two ways. That was recognized because you value me and you're going to pay me more, and recognized that you value me and you tell me that you value me in a variety of ways. So, we're using all of this information, along with other data points, to work with our recruitment and retention plans, as well as with our principals and our departments, at looking at components of employee engagement for next year. So, we're eager to educate everyone on the components, again, of our engagement with our workforce, and we will be zeroed in on that reward and recognition, largely because those are the two points that they were hopeful we would be working on. And you voted at our last meeting to approve a recommendation for salary increase, so we're happy about that. They have something addressed immediately. Questions? And you voted at our last meeting to approve a recommendation for salary increase, so we're happy about that. They have something addressed immediately. Questions?
I was going to have a question, but you answered it, darn it. So I have not, any, the board have any questions or comments?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. O'Brien.
On the matter of financially detrimental to leave, at what point does that, does it become financially detrimental?
It varies per, based on the employee because each person's profile is different. If you look at recruitment, there were people that said they came here because it was an attractive salary. And sometimes that is based on a profile. So everyone has the same amount of money and adjusts their money differently in districts. So it could be very advantageous for me as a special education teacher this year to go to that district because that district has arranged their money to pay more there than this district over here. So that's on the recruitment side of it. On the retention side, the same can apply. If that district rearranged their money in a certain way, it would not be advantageous for me to leave, it's better for me to stay here. So I don't know if that answers your question, but most, most districts do honor years of service at a certain rate. For us currently, it's at an $800 rate for five years. And if you have 20 years and you're not in a hard-to-fill position, you only get that $4,000 for that five years. And so you might already be making more in the other district and you would not be making as much if you came to Deer Valley.
And I hate to put you on the spot, do we know if other districts tend to do with the five-year?
It's varied.
Or is it just varied?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
And the other add to that, Jenny, you might want to talk about the benefits part and the retirement part, because once you get down the road a piece, it becomes almost golden handcuffs, you know, for the benefits and for the retirement components. And so that might have been reflected as well, I don't know.
It was reflected in our classified focus groups more often than it was reflected on the certified side, but that is true for people that have been in our district for a period of time. They do have that benefit of district covering their benefits up until the age of 65.
Okay, and you did give me a good answer, which is, it varies and it's not a black-and-white answer as much of the world is no longer. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, Jenna. Okay, Fiscal Services, Jim, Prop 1, 2, 3, results.
President Gregoire, members of the board, Dr. Wittenheimer, just wanted to give a brief update on Proposition 123, the results of that. It's already been mentioned, this, the election back on May 17th. The election is still unofficial at this point in time, but that just means that the Secretary of State still has to canvass the election. That is expected by the end of this week, on May 27th. We hope that that will be done either on May 27th or before. So winning slightly, I think there's only three counties in the state that didn't pass Proposition 123, but it only passed with a slight margin, about 51 to 49%. The, just a reminder of what our plan is in terms of Proposition 123, we have two plans, current-year plan, we're calling it 2015-16. So just as a reminder, we will need to revise our budget, so that's scheduled for our June 7th meeting and to include the $6.1 million that we're expecting from the Proposition 123 funding. And then in 2016-17, we have the framework of a plan from the board study session and then the subsequent meeting that we had back in May, in which we have provided for a salary increase for many of our employees. Just as a, as kind of a prelude to what we hope to bring back on June 7th, there are some revisions to that salary recommendation that we have the board consider so that we can include some positions that, I'll just say, wasn't entirely clear as to how we should account for them. We'd like that salary revision, the salary recommendation to include a revision that would specify exactly what to do in a category that we call other professional staff. And we intend to bring that to the board at the June 7th meeting for your consideration. And we will take a portion, the cost of that will come out of the unallocated amount that is assigned here, the $750,000 that shows. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding Proposition 123.
Good, Mrs. Fisher.
Mike, Jim, just to clarify for myself, because we've already kind of put these in salaries, it's kind of a clear message to our public what we are doing with 1, 2, 3 funds now and kind of for the life, isn't it?
President Gregoire, Ms. Fisher, that is correct. So we have, with the two plans, we're using the current-year funding in one capacity and then 2016 and 17, those are for that year and beyond, those funds will be dedicated to that, to those ongoing expenses.
Going off of, also with what Ms. O'Brien had said and what I've also heard in the community, do we have any type of plan to communicate this out? This is what Deer Valley has committed. We are dedicated to increasing the salaries of our teachers and our, and all of our staff and honoring our employees.
Yes, and Ms. Allred and her efforts, we've already been talking about how that'll be communicated to our stakeholders as was suggested by Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question and I think we tossed emails about on this because I see in the literature provided by the state that they say we would get the $7.1 million and you contend that we only get the $6.1 million. So I like to believe the state and not you, nothing personal, Jim, but when do we get an official notification what the dollar amount's going to be?
President Gregoire, yes, we've had an ongoing discussion about that, I will agree to that. The $7.1 million was an early estimate by the Joint Legislative Budget Committee that we think is, well, we know to be an amount that is not reliable. In fact, in their estimate, they actually state that it was an estimate using the prior year numbers for, and that will not be how it will be calculated. So we have received word that the Auditor General will publish the actual documents that we will need to revise our budget and to create next year's budget in the upcoming days. Hopefully by May 27th, we'll have the forms that we're looking for. And that will be the final say as to the dollar amounts. But in the actual legislative, in this past legislative session, they've actually set the base support level for us and with and without. And that was the, I think, the last email that we might have shared, that we may have communicated back and forth about, in which the amount is about $4.8 million in base support level increase for our district and about $1.5 million for the $50 million statewide increase because we have about 3% of the statewide population as a district. So it's going to be somewhere between $6.1 and $6.3 million in total and nowhere close to the $7.1 million that was originally projected by the Joint Legislative Budget Committee in November.
Okay, last question. Based on our 15% override, considering our base is going up, our override should go up as well. And I think you gave me an answer, but I just wanted to share that with everybody.
President Gregoire, yes, so because, that is indeed correct, that the override is based on a percentage of the revenue control limit. And if it weren't for the fact that we had an MNO override election back in November 2015, in that election, we have to state what the dollar amount will be for the first year and then it's a percentage every year thereafter. So for this year, the amount will not increase, I'm, when I say for this year, for 2016-17, the amount will not increase because that amount had to be stated in the voter pamphlet for the MNO override election. It will increase for 2017, 18, and beyond, but it only will increase by the base support level increase, not the additional $50 million, the $1.5 million that we will enjoy as part of Proposition 123 will not be included in the revenue control limit and so therefore will not be allowed to be increased by the MNO override. And then I, just for clarification, for 2015-16, the override amount has been set and the tax rate has already been established based on what the override is.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thanks, Jim. Old Business, approve the annual pre-K 12 use of facility field fee schedule for 2016-17.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the K 12 use of facilities field schedule for the 2016-17 school year.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the consent agenda AA through AG.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Action 9A, approve human resources changes.
I move that the governing board approve. Oh, I'm off here. We're on, no, I should have to get to 9A. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the human resource changes.
Second.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Item 10A, preview, negotiated tentative agreement for 16-17 pending ratification by employee associations. Batter up.
Okay, good evening again, President Gregoire, governing board members, Dr. Wittenheimer. If we want to make sure that you have in front of you both the PowerPoint and the tentative agreement, because we're going to be going through this with you. Okay, tentative agreement from the negotiation solutions team, both classified and certified. On the certified side, you'll see the team represented here, that would be me, Paula Tunis, principal, Maria Leva, DVEA president, Harley Kilman, teacher, and Lynn Miller, the other principal on the team. And then on the classified side.
Myself and, am I on? Sorry. Myself, Amy Trout, principal, Stephen Lund, who is the DVA, Divespa president, Dennis Bohack is the Divespa vice president, they both also work in facilities, Brenda Moore is a principal secretary, Joyce Cooley, assistant principal secretary, and Peggy Rinby, who is a secretary in the Human Resource Department.
Okay, we're going to begin with the certified negotiated agreement changes. Beginning with the cover page, we have made the change that we are adding the Deer Valley Education Association to that page as the board adopted policy GBB. It was requested that they also be recognized on the front page as the group that is recognized to negotiate this process. Section 12, job sharing and part-time teaching. You're going to see that there is no longer a deadline of February 15th to request a job share. The reason for that change is there have been many teachers and many principals that have requested to put a job share together past that February 15th deadline. And we have seen that there is no issue with that and at any time, it would be appropriate to put that together if we are in the staffing time cycle. So that was agreed that that change would be appropriate. So that time will not exist any longer. Also, we did change the notification to Human Resources. If a team decided that they wanted to dissolve their job share, they should notify Human Resources by December 10th. The reason the December 10th deadline was placed there is because that's when we start our staffing cycle for the following year. That does not prohibit, however, someone from resigning later in that cycle and then the job share would dissolve. It's really nice to have the advance notice if we can have that advance notice. Moving into Section 18. This section was actually an MOU that was established in 2009, and this is specific to professional time schedules. The purpose of this MOU was to create a team, that a campus would create a team and look at a schedule of meetings. So not the master schedule, this would be a schedule of meetings. And it outlined the groups that would need, or the representatives that would need to be pulled together and then by the time of September, end of September, they would need to notify HR when they were complete with that schedule. This has been an MOU since 2009, as I mentioned, and when something has been an MOU for that period of time, it is normal for that MOU to then be embedded into language and so that is proposed for this year. Also, in Section 18, you're going to see that there are name changes. Some of this language was obsolete because job names had changed and so we changed, we did change those. Also, we noted that there are areas where principals may decide, or a teacher may decide that they need to have a substitute. And so we added the language that they could have a substitute when needed, and you'll see that, the last bullet of this particular PowerPoint. We also did add librarians and sage in the category of needing a substitute if required by the principal or agreed upon. I do also want to note that we changed elementary band to non-pull-out band because we do have many campuses at the K six level that have banned teachers teaching all of the kids and it's not pull-out banned and therefore they would need a substitute. Section 20. The first part of Section 20, these are just format changes, there is no content change. So you'll see that we changed head coaches from D to five and under head coaches, we changed two to D, just format again. But also, under Section 20, you'll see that we changed the name GITE. GITE is now a word that we are no longer using and instead, we are using intervention and that falls under MTSS. We did, however, want to make sure that schools knew that they could provide this addenda to someone that coordinates the efforts of 504s and interventions for students prior to the referral process for special education. And so we have named this intervention coordinator instead of GITE. Also, K1, National Board Certificated Teachers Receive an Addenda. We were not honoring that same addenda for counselors who go through the same process. So we added that to, to language so that those counselors could also receive the same Under the appendix, we added a memorandum of understanding and this was after the override and it outlines from DVEA, so this, that section of the memorandum, the MOU, shows the flat rate increase as well as the change in the base salary without Prop 1, 2, 3. Also, in the appendix, if you'll flip your page all the way, I think it's the last page in your tentative agreement for the certified side, you'll see that we worked on what was called the leave conversion table. We, we met several times regarding the leave conversion table and what we ended up with and you see in front of you is that we, we didn't, we no longer wanted to use a table. We wanted to make sure that we were honoring hour for hour. And so what you see in front of you is rather than a conversion of time into an eight-hour day, we are asking that our teachers be on the campus for a seven-hour day, with high school minutes changing, everyone is there for a seven-hour day. So we are proposing that we allocate seven hours per day still for the 12 days and that if a teacher calls in during that time for an hour, they will, it will show as an hour rather than a conversion to the eight. The benefit in that in the end is that when a teacher chooses to separate their employment with Deer Valley, that seven hours would be converted with a premium back to the eight hours so that they would receive that pay, that leave payout when they separated. And we see that as a incentive for longevity. Also, I want to note that DVEA will take this to their board and to Also, I want to note that DVEA will take this to their board, and to their reps next week for ratification, and they're, did I say next week?
Yeah.
Tomorrow. They're taking it tomorrow, and your intent is to ratify it by Thursday, by Friday.
Okay. President Gregoire, Dr. Weitenheimer, governing board members, I would like to address the classified changes that we made this year. So your next slide and the next page in your tentative agreement, in the section marked classified, you're going to see under section 11, which is the employment status section under new hires, we've added the language, employees must work more than half a year in order to be eligible for a pay raise for the following year. This new language is being added because this is our current and past practice. The requirement of an employee needing to work more than half of the year is in section 19-9 when we address employees coming back from a leave, they have to have worked more than half the year. It also is addressed in section 10 when an employee has been rifled and they're rehired. And since it has been our past practice and current practice, we wanted to make sure the language was clear and agreed upon in our language, in the negotiated agreement. In section 20, under salary compensation, thank you Jenna for switching that, the number of paychecks that an employee can choose has been changed, and this is governed by our payroll department. They gave us this information, and we need, realized that we needed to update our, our manual. So the choices for a nine-month employee is either 22 or 26 pays instead of what used to be listed in there as 20 or 26 pays. And for 10 months, it is 23 or 26 paychecks instead of 22 or 26. So that's just a change based on how payroll needs to issue paychecks.
Okay. And I'm just going to stop you there because that, I think, would significant people who are on a tight budget, because you spread it out two more weeks, that weekly paycheck's a little bit smaller, so this is something that's...
That is a choice that they have. This is a choice they get to pick. It's not governed on them. They normally would get a paycheck for 20, 22 paychecks, but if they choose 26, a little bit gets saved out.
No, I'm comparing the change from 20 to 22. In other words, Dennis, if somebody's on a tight budget, they are to get it planned out, and you're spreading it out over 22 weeks instead of 20, that means their, each one's going to be a little bit smaller because it's spread out over 22 weeks versus a 20-week. That make sense? Oh, we're still doing honoring 20 still?
22 or 26 is what a nine-month employee can choose.
Are we already doing the 22?
They're, they've been doing it that way. We've just...
This wasn't documented properly.
Yeah, I just want to make sure because it makes a difference if you're on a monthly, you know.
Yeah, when we had Jeanette Vega look over our language, she brought that to our attention, that that had been changed, and we've been doing it with the 22 or 26, and so we wanted to just update the language.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Also, under the salary compensation section, section 20, under B, we are now adding that, I'm sorry, classified employees are now eligible for addenda. We're really excited about that change. And that change came about after a committee reviewed the legalities that were associated with hourly employees holding addenda positions. It was determined that it was okay, and it was allowed, and they could do that. So because of that change, going back to the way when we did allow classified employees to hold addenda, we reinstated the language that was in the manual at that time, which just clearly spells out how they're paid, and it's based on the certified salary schedule, and that language is all listed in the tentative agreement, you can see it there. We basically just reinstated the language that was there before that change was made.
Since, again, stop you right there. When was the law changed?
Well, it wasn't the law, well, I actually don't know of a legal, Jim, can you address that?
President Gregoire, it's, it's an interpretation of the law. So this goes back to about the, the year 2003, when it was deemed that you could not pay an hourly employee also in some other fashion other than hourly. That was the interpretation back then, in 2003. And then sometime ago, probably about four or five years ago, there was an interpretation that was tested that allows for, as long as there is a clear distinction between different job responsibilities, that you could pay them differently. So you can have an hourly employee, they have to do a different job for you, and you can pay them either piecemeal or addenda work.
Yeah, I know this came up a couple of years ago, that's why I just wanted a clarification. Okay, sorry, Michelle. Go ahead.
Okay. No, we're good. Thank you, Jim, I appreciate that. And then on the last slide is our appendix. We have also included in our manual the memo of understanding regarding the salary. In our classified hiring schedule, in appendix K of the classified agreement, it says available funds for annual increases will be split 50-50 with a percent and a flat rate. And because we gave a flat rate this year, we did incorporate that memo of understanding just to show that it was agreed upon that we would take it as a flat rate and not split it 50-50. So that's what the appendix change is there. It's actually the same memo of understanding that the certified have. I would like to let you know also that the classified, the Divespa group has ratified, they ratified last Wednesday. And if you have any other questions, we'll be glad to take those at this time.
Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Fisher.
I actually have a couple, just kind of going back off of, of what Mike had asked about. So there's not, I mean, the, I understood the interpretation changed based on the fact that their addenda is in a completely different category than their job. Does that keep us from bumping up against any wage and hour as far as meeting that minimum wage based on hours of the service of the addenda?
President Gregoire, Ms. Fisher, in terms of calculating their hours that would be for...
In other words, if they're, okay, we, we have to pay a minimum, a minimum wage. So if we are going to, say, have an addenda, it's, it's, a janitor's going to be a coach, completely day and night, so that meets the interpretation standard. So we can then put them in the other position. However, they're going to be working, you know, enough hours to where our addenda would put them below minimum wage. Is that any consideration, or is that ever an issue, something that we could bump up against? Has that even been considered?
It, it, it was initially because they were treated as an hourly employee and were, back into 2003 interpretation, and there was never an opportunity for them to not be treated as an hourly employee. The new interpretation now is that they are an hourly employee, and then they take a different job assignment, then they are no longer an hourly employee in that separate and distinctly different job. So we would have the same, we would have the same test, if you would, for everybody that is getting that same addenda that's already an exempt employee. So they, they end up being essentially, for all practical purposes, they end up being an exempt employee with the addenda.
Okay. And then the other, there's a couple of areas I was concerned with that I actually see in both manuals that, that weren't addressed, and I know that there's a lot of work that will still be done in the future, but one that I would like to see considered is with, in, well, I can tell you, in the certified manual, it's on page 92. It talks about committee formation, committees, and it says essentially that, that each, well, it, it's actually conflicting language, that's one of the reasons it needs to be corrected, in my opinion. And my other concern is that we're potentially stifling the voice of some individuals. The certified manual says that they will select all teachers on committees, and then it goes on to further say that they will select the personnel with administration and the others. But in the Divespa, it says that they will select their committee members on some, so there's conflicting there. My other concern is if, if it's a, say, the board committee, we, we are going to put together a committee, the board, and we say we want five teachers on there, according to this language, DVEA selects all those teachers. And so it then becomes the DVEA committee, not the board committee. And I'm concerned that that language being in there almost inhibits the board from being able to solicit voices. One example that is the, the committee that we, the building committee that we put together, each board member selected, was it two? And it just so happens that we did select DVEA members, but what if we hadn't? What if I had selected Joe Science teacher, and he wasn't a DVEA member, and DVA didn't select? So my concern with that language is, is, so I would like to see, and it's in both manuals, I would like to see it say a specific number. So they would select two members on each committee if there's, if there's to be a teacher on the committee, they have a selection of up to two members. So that, let's say there's four, they select two, and then the other two are selected in a different way, whether it be the other, whether it be through the teacher or whoever's putting the committee together or board. The other reason for that is if we have it in this language that only they can select, each group can select their own, it's almost like we're requiring our employees to join. We allow our employees to join, but if, if only these groups can select members of all committees, then let's say you don't want to join. And so that, that guarantees you cannot be on a committee. And so that's my other concern. I also, and this I think is only on the certified manual because it's different in the classified manual, it talks about furnishing paper copies of their, just clean it up, I'm sure they use the electronic, I mean, it's there, I'm sure they already do it, but I mean, I sat there and calculated, and I thought, okay, 50 copies with this many pages is over 19 rings of paper. And that's not counting the printing. So, I mean, it's just, so I would just like to see that in language kind of cleaned up.
Ms. Fisher, one of the things that, I think there's probably quite a bit of that cleanup that we need to do, particularly more, more, more like the second one than the first example that you used, but we, we've just received kind of the second wave of policy revisions from ASBA, and one of them is the board advisory committee policy. And, and we've got to work our way through that one, make sure that that's reflective, and then, as we all know, policy trumps everything, so...
Correct. But I would really rather policy not just run over this, because this is, this is our, this is our honoring their voice. And so I would like to have something say that they could put maybe two, or they could select one, or whatever amount they come up with, or you come up with as, as a group. Because I did see that, the policies coming through that basically give us a responsibility for our committees, and, and I would hate to have it just overrun complete language.
And my, my point was not to have one overrun the other, but it was to have them come together, yeah, so that we aren't trying to frame the policy in one way after we've already accepted language in a, in a different way. And, and what appears in that advisory committee policy, and I think we decided, we think it's BDF, but we're not exactly sure, is that we've got work teams, we've got committees, and we have board-appointed advisory committees, and we've got to make sure that we can mesh all of that out, and then whatever happens in negotiated language in any or all of those need to be reflected as well. I'm just thinking they need to hold hands, and we're, we're running a little bit slow on the one.
They, they do, and we did, we did get that language. Jim, when were we in Laughlin? Couple months ago? Yeah, for Asbo, when we were in Laughlin and Asbo, we, we did receive the, the new language. So that's, that's my one thing, since this is a preview, is that, that may be considered? Because I would really hate for some policy to just run over our groups.
President Gregoire and Ms. Fisher, I think the section in the classified manual that you're referring to is section 23, in case you want to make a note, 23B5. It's on page 43 of the classified manual.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I just clarify something, please? Dr. Weitenheimer, so if we were to pass the certified and classified manuals without any further changes currently, and then we go through this advisory policy, would we then go back to modify the certified, potentially certified and classified manuals if needed based on those board advisory policies?
President Gregoire, Mr. O'Brien, yes, that is standard practice. When there is a policy change or a change in law, we then review the certified manual to make sure it's compliant with both. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, let's move on to public comment finally. Sorry, folks, for making you wait so long. We have an admonishment posted up here. On the bottom here. Right there.
Oh, wow. Oh, okay. Do you want me to read it, or you want to read it, Mike?
Go ahead.
Give me that one then.
Here, I, I can read it if you want.
Go ahead.
The board invites public comment on the district's business in general and on any agenda item in specific. All speakers must observe the rules of decorum. Speakers must fill out a card listing name, address, and topic, and hand it to the board secretary prior to the president calling the meeting to order. Speakers must make their comments in no more than three minutes. If necessary to accommodate all speakers within the 30-minute overall limit, the board president may shorten each speaker's time. Constructive criticism is in order. Rudeness, vulgarity, disruptive conduct, or remarks disrespecting personal dignity are not in order and will not be allowed. Under the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the governing board cannot discuss or act on any items not listed on the agenda. Board members may respond to criticism made by a speaker, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Okay. First, we'll have Maren Rosendahl, then Mark Rosendahl, and Paul Strauss. When you get to the microphone, just speak your name, then go ahead, you have three minutes to make your piece.
I'm Maren Rosendahl. The mission of the Deer Valley Unified School District is to provide extraordinary educational opportunities to every learner. Think about this. Have you ever felt powerless? Have you ever tried to help and not be able to help? Have you ever watched as your child suffered and there was nothing you could do about it? My daughter, a junior at Boulder Creek, has been harassed by a teacher because of absences due to an undiagnosed illness, where we are still trying to figure out what it is and what it will mean to her long-term. And because of a teacher's unwillingness to accept that her absences were due to her illness and doctors running tests, she will not allow her to make up the schoolwork she missed. On May 11th, I sent an email to the school, the district, and the school board, a plea for help, and yet again, no help was received. My son, who is on an IEP, is struggling. Every time I ask for help, I get pushback from the teachers. When the teachers don't follow the IEP accommodations, my son is the one that loses, not the teacher. My youngest son was a bright, energetic boy. He had friends, he enjoyed learning, he wanted to go to school. For the last three years of constant verbal and physical abuse, he went from an A to a D student. An incident happened at school on April 20th and 21st, and that was the last straw. When I picked my son up, I had never seen him so distraught over what had happened. At this point, it was not only the kids, but the teachers, aides, and administration that had bullied my child, and the justification that was so bizarre that I withdrew my son from Diamond Canyon, and he now attends Anthem. In all of these cases, I contacted the schools through emails, meetings, and phone calls. I was horrified for the lack of support offered to me, and the one constant of being told that they are the professionals, not me. You ask for parents to volunteer and get involved, well, I did. But after this year, I just don't have faith in this district. You have a no-bully policy that makes no sense, no clear steps to prevent or protect students from other students and even teachers. You have three great kids that, due to circumstances, have been marked for life because what has transpired this year. Where is the accountability? This year is over, the damage is done, and the teachers and administrations will go on like it's nothing, leaving my husband and me to pick up the pieces of our children and try to put them back together. I can wholly hope that next year the school district will have an answer to the question of accountability. When a student is suffering... When a student is suffering, where is the help? The answer to the questions I asked in the beginning is this year I have felt incredibly powerless. I have tried to help, going through all of the hoops you have laid out for the parents to go through. I have watched three of my four children suffer by the hands of some of the teachers and most definitely by the administration of two of your A-plus schools. So here I stand, asking for justice for my children. They deserve a top-notch education. And as a public school district, you are required by law to provide it. So where is the accountability and what are you going to do?
Thank you. Mark Rosendahl.
I'm Mark Rosendahl. And it's been a tough year, this year in our house, you can tell. My daughter's a junior at Boulder Creek, has, you know, she's a pretty smart kid. And it's had some major medical issues this year. We've had, been to see the specialists at PCH, Banner Healthcare. I've got a stack of bills this tall. And she's got some great teachers too that have actually, well, because of that, she's missed a lot of school. But also have some great teachers there that have been over backwards for her so she can finish her curriculum for this year, and she's doing pretty well. Her ACT scores were off the charts, 31 in a 33 in two of those segments. So she's a smart kid. We have one teacher though that is unwilling to take these answers. Take these, unwilling to accept her absence was due to her illness and doctor's tests. And she will not allow her to make up these tests. So we called the school administration and we said, hey, well, C is fine. C's a fine grade to have. Well, it's not a fine grade for me. It's not a fine grade for my daughter. All right. So my wife has called and emailed and met with the school, and the school continues to stand by the teacher, which, you know, I understand. But just this past week, we found out that one of the administrators there at Boulder Creek actually told my wife that maybe Boulder Creek is not the school for her. Think about that for a second. I've got three kids, four kids, and two have already gone through here. My son, Cameron, great kid, loving, loving kid, has an IEP and he struggles. He, on the outside, he looks like a normal kid, but he has a hard time managing the work, not just the work, but processing what, what he's learning. We got with the teachers and we've been very detailed in the IEP format that we have. And it's supposed to help the kid, you know? It's not about the teachers, it's about the kid. But what's happened is that they tell us that we're part of the IEP team, but every suggestion we make is shot down. We try to work with them, but as recently as last week, we're at the school going over the IEP yet again at the end of the school year. I'm terrified for my son next year as a freshman at Boulder Creek. These teachers continue, they, some of them work with them, but those dismiss the doctor recommendations that we have and they do not follow the accommodations with the IEP. So what happens is my son suffers, not the teachers. And yes, next year's going to be a very big struggle for him. My youngest, a great little kid, very full of energy, love going to school. And then we had this altercation a few years ago where he blocked the punch on the playground. Ever since that time, he has withdrawn himself. Because he's the one that went to the school, he's the one that got sent to the principal, he's the one who missed lunch, and from that day, he's just been bullied. He's a little guy, all right? So, you know, it kind of happens. I guess that's the norm. So he went from a A student, a sage student, to a D student. During that time, he lost chunks of hair because of the stress he was going through. Every other day, he came to me saying, Dad, my stomach hurts. I'm like, we need to go to the doctor. Well, his stomach doesn't hurt. He didn't want to go to school. All right. He comes home, he's so, right now, he comes home, he withdrew from everyone. He doesn't want to go to school. He comes home from school every day and he puts his PJs on and he's fine standing aside. We get him involved in sports, it doesn't matter. All right? He's lost his confidence. You know, we can't even talk to school and plead with anyone to do something. Once again, teachers, you know, they say, we don't see what's happening. And he's always smiling. Well, he keeps it internal. An incident happened a few weeks ago, the end of April, and that was the last straw. Connor came out of the house, out of the school, just distraught. And at that day, he was distraught.
Mark, we have to wrap it up now, I'm sorry.
Okay. Two seconds. What is not surprising is the fact that when you talk to other parents, they know exactly who you're talking about. They know, without mentioning a name, and when you talk to the teachers, they and the administration, they know who these students of the bullies are too. But yet, nothing happens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could we follow up with that? Paul Strauss.
Good evening, Paul Strauss, teacher at Sunset Ridge. President Gragoire, governing board, Dr. Weitenheimer, good evening. I just wanted to real quick address Prop 123 resolution, something I've been very passionate about, you know, throughout the state. First off, I want to commend the board with, your intentions with 123 are very admirable and I, and I applaud it in trying to fix a broken salary schedule. I'm actually a recipient of that fix because I have, after teaching for 12 years in the district, I was making $38,000 a year, you know, $4,000 more than beginning salaries. So I am a beneficiary of, of these changes. But one of the things I wanted to address is that there is a, a big chunk of staff in our district who is quite upset. And they kind of feel a little betrayed, and I want to speak on their behalf. And these are our, our veteran teachers that have been around for a long time that are getting $500 of the Prop 123 money. Now, I totally, I think everyone's excited that everyone's getting at least $1,900, which I think under normal circumstances, I mean, we'd be overjoyed. I mean, something that we haven't even seen. But I think one of the problems is that the message really hasn't gotten out to the district that the intent of the board was to fix the broken system. And so what a lot of our veteran teachers were seeing was, after all these years of experience, I'm getting $500, knowing that that $1,400 was because of the override. And so I think that the communication really needs to pick up a little bit better in trying to explain that. But I also think it's perception is reality and we're dealing with an area that these veteran teachers who have a lot more experience and are even better teachers than I am, are looking at, well, the district's getting $6 million of funding from Prop 123 and I'm getting $500. And so that is kind of hard to swallow for many people. So I do have a couple of recommendations. First off, I would love for whenever the board has a philosophical or a main intent of what they're trying to do, it'd be nice to actually get communication directly from the board to the staff of what is going on so that they have a better idea. I know, I wasn't even sure what a predictive salary was until I was at the study session. And that was very confusing for other people. My other recommendation would be any future money that we do get, you know, beyond what is set up already through 123, I would really like to see a disproportionate amount, at least initially, going to what I refer to as the 500 Club. These veteran teachers that did only get $500. And I think we need to put more emphasis on trying to pay them a little bit more money to support and honor what they have given to this district. And I think that would go a long way and mend a lot of fences. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Meetings are posted. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Deb a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.